Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewstv.
Father, we thank for this day you've given to us, Lord. Thank for all the many blessings that you give us, Lord. Lord, we pray that you just keep your hand upon us, Lord, in decisions we make to move this county forward, Lord. Let's say with the dearest precious name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains us, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Call me the Lord. Continue signing bills until, Kenneth. Put Jimmy Mayo on your agenda.
Yeah, I forgot to.
And it's on top of the list, right there under, on the, on the, right in there, right in there.
I forgot.
But that, that ain't gonna get no better, is it?
Wait till you get to be my age, you think you can forget now?
I don't believe so.
I have to be, yeah, I'm not perfect. Sorry. I added you.
Fifty-seven.
You said fifty?
Fifty, I'm sorry.
My last hour.
How you doing?
I'm sorry, I didn't get back with you.
Just got to earn help, I get the field. Yeah, well, we need to learn. What do you do about what is?
You'll get me for like a few weeks. Well, actually, it might be more than that. We've got a, we're hiring someone else. So there's, we'll have that integration period where I'm trying to probably bring in one of these.
Start taking care of him.
Yeah.
Oh, how you doing, Jimmy? I'm good.
Hey, do you mind saying you sent money?
How are you doing?
I'm good, good. Working.
Hey, get up.
Probably more open to this than ever, so.
Very well, very well.
Yeah, that or we'll get Michael to come. He's got a lot of ones, but just because he's trying to cover the southern half, the whole southern half, I'm trying to grab the whole longer hand. It's like we're, we got a water, we got a fire hose company.
Kenneth, did you tell me that you had replaced them boats on, on the cutters that were bottled around to boom down? You better check them.
They said you gotta keep them checked.
Yeah.
They worked themselves out.
Yeah. You done lost some? Broke boom all.
Broke it off?
Well, it broke and laid down, might put that plate on it.
Boats on oil.
There's, there's a, there's a lot of them. Like I love you.
Don't turn type before a D S.
Oh, yeah. Mine takes him, but I lost three of mine.
And I know they said keep them checked.
I had six in mine, and I lost three of them. I replaced all six of them.
Right here's the field. This has probably got twenty-five in it.
Okay, well, let's call the meeting, Lord, with overhead prayer and allegiance and, we got Ms. Crawford here, so we begin with our work session today. Mr. Fields, you're first on the agenda.
I'm expecting to be first, but I want to thank y'all for letting me come back to work and enjoying being back around people again.
Well, we're glad you're able to come back to work.
I appreciate that. I'm doing better every day. Someday, I told people I feel like I can run a mile, but I get my shoes tied and I'm ready to sit down and take a break.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, no, sir, I just wanted to come and, and, and back y'all down to the office, if anybody'd like to come down and look around and explain things, tell you how things work and how we do some things. But one thing we need to get called back up on, we kind of slipped on, this, this we're order behind is our safety meetings, some safety committee meetings. Mr. Bob, you actually as chairman, I need to get with you and others.
All right, so you plan and Will, or Will, when you get one planned, Will?
All right, the safety committee, I just need you, but whenever we have a safety meetings, and we have to have four a year, as for all your hands, y'all in all your hands, two-way shop, and usually try to do them all together, if y'all have any safety meetings y'all would like, bring the topic up on, I'll try to find some information on it.
Well, we think about, maybe we'll do one safety meeting without, Mr. Y'all go over some, uh, weather to get, uh, what am I trying to say, the, uh, have more than only trucks and things like that, so we used to know when to have the drop school, but you had the,
Walk around inspection.
Oh, yeah, you had the pre, pre-trip inspection.
Yes.
So include that in it.
Okay.
And also, it's very important on our insurance, our liability insurance also, that we don't show up, we, we get fin lines.
Yes, sir.
We started that, well, we did, back, year or two ago.
Yeah, the pension.
We turned strong the papers off and.
That's right.
We've already had these meetings, but I say once again.
Yeah, yeah.
We can bring it up, and make new papers, and their designs are fit for whatever y'all need it to fit. Then I'm gonna thank you and Nene, y'all know how to get ahold of me, come down to visit.
Thank you, and glad you're here, buddy.
Thank you, thank you. But, Shale?
Yes, sir, I got a couple items, should take very long. Uh, first of all, we, we talked a little bit about it, but we hadn't really made a final decision in regards to our patching and taping for this year. Looking over the budgets, I feel like we can probably allocate eighty thousand dollars per district, and that would include fifteen thousand, forty cent money that we want to give them. And I just, if that's agreeable with y'all, we'll, we'll make plans to do that. If y'all got any questions regarding that, then certainly that'd be a good time to ask them. And this is traditionally what we've done in the past, is eighty thousand.
How do we may increase it?
Get additional revenue.
Now, I mean, what's this thing for eighty thousand?
It's, we, we look at our, our overall budget, our accounts, you know, we spent, we really spent a lot of money. Last year, we spent four hundred thousand dollars on that Canaro forty-two project, and that's kind of got us in the hole just a little bit. But what we do, Kenneth, we, we look at our, our budget, our amount of money we got in account, and we try to budget what we can, what we can afford to do. And then we gotta realize that we gotta match our Canaro fourteen project.
That's a seven hundred forty, but it's about an eight hundred and fifty.
We'll have to pay twenty percent on that. So, um, you know, in, in our normal maintenance activity, that's about what we can afford to do, you know, in, in state, state and, and the black.
Yeah, forty-two is not planned.
No, we, we traditionally, I try to keep three or four hundred thousand dollars in that account for emergencies like that. That was what I felt like, the commission felt like was an emergency, it was very dangerous. And, uh, we send it out to contract, we do part by contract and part by our own force account work. And it was about four hundred thousand dollars, so.
What?
Let me help out just a second, okay? Um, if kind of most of y'all or your monthly financial statements for the period ending December thirty-first, um, let me pop it up something there. And if it's not, I'll break it up for you. But if y'all pass this along, there are three funds on the bottom. You have your triple R, your secondary road, and your road construction, and there're gonna be these little columns right here, okay? All right, at December thirty-first, your triple R was two hundred and four thousand, your secondary road was five hundred and thirty thousand, and your road construction was sixty-eight thousand. Those are the three funds that y'all operate off of, and the two-way operates off of. So right now, if we had another situation on December thirty-first, exactly like what had happened on forty-two, then you're looking at five, six, seven, eighty, eight hundred thousand dollars, and half of it would have been wiped away, so that would have left us with only four hundred thousand dollars to operate. Now, the road construction has to draw down, and that's how they operate, because they don't have a revenue producing. So right here, when you look at secondary and triple R, you're looking at a hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, it's on my desk. The hundred thousand dollars is about how much revenue on the gasoline taxes that come in for those two funds. So if you think about it, a hundred thousand a month, five districts, and a two-way shop, that's what you're operating with.
Will you have time today, when you speak with us, to bring us back with us and go with us again?
Yes, I had all of those ready yesterday. I just want to make sure that when you had asked that question about more money, more than eighty thousand, that y'all saw the revenues that were coming in on the bottom of that sheet, so that y'all saw our limitations.
And certainly, if you looked over that and had any additional questions, we'd be glad to, be glad to have.
Yeah, Mike is aware of all this stuff also.
We keep up with it, we track it, you know, we don't spend down to the last dollar, we, we, you know, we want to make sure in times of emergency, we got money to take advantage of various grants that may become available, or other similar type of emergencies.
This is thing when we come up with each other.
And, and honestly, we've got another situation, since you brought that up. We got a bridge down on Johnson Bottom Road, that would come out of this pot quite as well. And, and, and we factor some into that, and if we spend all our money, those things are just not gonna get done, you know? And those are, those are the type of things that we don't know that they came up from day to day, so we try to plan and make sure that we don't overspend. But we do need to look at that.
We don't have.
In that bridge, since it's an inventory bridge, it will come out of the force end account, the big pot. We can come out of your district. It will come out of this pot of money that we do our patching and taping out of.
How long, how long my kids, have we been doing the eighty, has it been above eighty in the past?
I don't think it has. Um, we, we typically try to do around eighty. I mean, we probably, we may have fluctuated some, not a significant amount, but, um.
Eighty, eighty, I'm, I'm kind of like Kenneth, I'd like to see how we can raise it up, because, uh, with eighty, what we done, what our former commissioners done, that, that don't give you a lot of, of expensive cost.
You're right, it, it's nowhere near none, and that's why, that's why it's important that we boost the additional avenue for revenue.
We got, we got a house on, cause their roads in the past six months to three months, they're just getting worse and worse.
Yeah, and, and I've got some things I want to address regarding that too, further down, when we get further down on the agenda. But, but you're right, y'all need to look at that. If you got any questions regarding that, call me, call the rule, we'll, we'll be glad to answer those questions, and give y'all a better understanding of how everything operates. But that's a good question, but a good, good point, no question.
But all this, still, all this money in all these categories come from particularly gasoline.
But yeah, this four, five and the two cents for the inspection fee is.
But that's only avenues we have of increasing expenses.
That's right, that's right.
Only way we'll get more money paid with is if the new gas tax passes.
That's right.
Our people use, start using more.
And too, and, and I know, I know a lot of our, this, this is based on our population and stuff, but I know, I know there's a lot of roads in my district that haven't seen nothing in twenty years, you know, and, and we're just short of money.
And let me say this, I wasn't gonna bring this up now, but I guess now's about as good as time as any. I've been out and about, you know, and you're right, we've got potholes upon potholes. I'm really concerned about, you know, getting these fixed in a timely manner, and because of the liability, and there's just, there's some bad public. And I had, you know, if we need to, we may need to take some of this, we've got to get those potholes filled on, on the, in the roads. I mean, I think it's important to do that. And it's hard to do it when you don't have the money and the personnel to do that, but, you know.
And let me say, where you're really not making much progress when you put this old coal mix in. There's pothole patching machine in my district, as they're much more permanent, or well, much, last much longer than, uh, just packing. So usually, you don't, you have loose material in the bottom of these holes when you put that, uh.
It does, it does a better job.
It does much better job. Here's the problem with the pothole patcher, there's some, there's some weather limitations. And, and, and we, I've talked with the people that run it, we kind of fill the fifty-degree range, it's an emulsified asphalt, you know, it's, it's, it's water and asphalt mixed. But if you get below fifty, we just don't feel like it's effective and does quite as good. But, but here's the deal, we still got, we still have duty and responsibility to fix those holes. We can't wait on the pothole patcher. We, we need to get some of these holes filled, and then if it comes out, it just comes out. Right now, we've got some roads that desperately need potholes patched, and, and I'm willing to commit to, to do what we need to do to catch up at least, but we've had a, a, a whole bunch of rain. And that's contributed to the problem that we've got. But, um, you know, if y'all got some suggestions, I've got some people, if y'all need some help, if we need to, if we need to take some money out of here to help give, we just, we need to get these holes filled up.
They just, I can say, I mean, pothole patching, uh, they expect you to have personnel out there to keep it safe. We don't even have enough to do pothole patching, let alone do flagging.
I know, I know, but.
So, you know, sometimes make personnel, of course, I know you have enough time to keep enough personnel to run the garbage truck.
We, we have, we have one to two to three out every day, just about every day. And, and these, these legitimate things, I mean, these are doctors appointing, and people, people get sick and.
Well, it's their time.
That's right, and things come up. And, um, you know, it may be, it may be for a temporary purpose, we get additional personnel, temporary, to get, to get, to get this situation taken care of, you know? Y'all just, and I'm not, y'all know better than me, y'all, y'all ride your districts a lot more than I do, I mean, we've got some holes that need patching.
In the summer, when I start patching again, go to three-foot patching, and that stretches eighty thousand as far as we can get it, no more eight-foot patching.
Yeah, we, we do what the commissioner wants us to do.
In District Two, we're going back to three-foot.
And that's fine, but what we typically do is ask, ask the commissioner what he wants, what he wants us to do, and we do.
Once you do the eight-foot, you can't give it a couple of roads.
I know.
And all the other roads left out.
And some of them may want to do some segmenting, some of them may want to, you know, we have, we have a variety of things that we do. But typically what I do is I give individually, y'all instruct us, what road do you want us to do, and how you want us to do it, and then we perform more.
As far as, as far as coal, as far as coal mix goes, we have pretty good luck with it in our district, but we've always cleaned the holes out before we put anything in. I mean, you know, we'll sweep them out, shovel them out, and then the trick is that, you've got to come back and patch over it later on.
It's gotta be taken off, the water's gonna go through it, I mean, that, I mean, that's what it's designed for.
That's the best way, you're right, I agree.
And that's where I want, in District Two, I want whatever, all asphalt, tar and plant mix, shot with tar and rock.
Well, we just, we need to get with you, we need, we, we need to ride the roads, and make sure we have an order priority. That way, if we run out of, we run out of money before you get everything done, we've got the things done that you want done in the priority.
Honestly, believe I'm gonna get on every road with that eight thousand.
Yeah, well, that's good, and I hope, I hope we can get some more money. But so, with that being said, y'all can think about that, let me know what y'all want to do.
Do, uh, do we shop, go to a sweeper?
Yeah. Yeah.
You didn't get pushed, Brian?
So y'all got any push, we, I mean, do, Jenny, we're moving on to the next item, if we're good.
Well, and I say a lot of people, uh, I'm, I guess, uh, they've never been, well, in their rest, and they've been told, our districts operate totally on gasoline tax, we don't get sales tax, that's law on our property. If people quit buying gasoline, so, we, we go out business.
The last time there was a gasoline tax was in nineteen ninety-two, and it was five cents per gallon. That was the last time the additional.
That's reason it's so important, I mean, hurts us so bad if people go, uh, travel this road down Interstate twenty-two to,
Ninety-two?
Twenty-two to, uh, Tupelo and, and stop down in reception by cheaper gas.
Since from the gas, and they talking about the gas, and the reason they go to Tupelo, and Fulton is cheaper. Marion County has always been the highest place for gas, and what's the reason?
Well, I called the other day and asked our, uh, Sonny Bryceville, he said, anything you can do about it? Said you, they're not without, without the limits of price gouging. I said, I asked him, I said, is there anything we can do about this? And he says, it's like, it's all the state like this.
But Marion County, you can go wherever, Marion County, it's always ten, fifteen cents.
That's the distribution of the distributor, till he gets to a certain limit.
In the, in the last few years, it has come more in line with some of the surrounding gas prices have, because we've got outside, it's not, it's not three distributors no more in the county, we've got outside, little more competition. I was in the gas business twenty-four years, I mean, you know, so did I know. Yeah, and I can guarantee one thing, it wasn't made, there wasn't no money made extra on the pumping it in.
Well, but still, how many more distributors we have now coming in than we did?
A lot, a lot from out of town.
There are lots?
Mm-hmm, and see, now you don't have, actually, in Marion County, now other than, you don't have nobody but motor petroleum.
West no longer.
West no longer, West sold out.
And, uh, what's his name, Larry?
Yep, Larry went out and passed away, and well, Harold West passed away.
That's the number one question, is when that squashed gas prices higher in Marion County than anywhere else.
Who, who does those fuel code? They do most, all of them up around where I live up there, it's cheaper in Marion County on the northern end.
That's probably, uh.
Scott, is there any way you could get us some more, some better answer?
That's a tough side of Russell, if I can't remember the name of that.
If, uh, if, if anybody had any control over this, or had determined, uh?
Yes, I was gonna talk to you a little bit about the gas tax stuff.
Okay.
That's, that's a main issue, that's probably been asked that as much as anything, and it is, it's, uh, it's kind of, I said, once you drive a Ford, and it's twenty, twenty, fifteen to twenty cents a gallon.
It adds up after a while.
Well, that's the reason I've said all along, the most important thing we've done, and one of the worst things how it does, is, is North Fork Bridge up here. This has been a, the, how, how long's the right-of-way been built between Hamilton and Old Bear Creek? I mean, I could work up if you're, build a four lane.
I, I don't know when that property acquisition was acquired.
But if we,
Been a long time ago.
If we could have got a four lane up there and let people go to Florence instead of Tupelo, we'd been, uh, we'd have been a whole heap better off.
Okay, great, move on, okay. Um, there's a herbicide school in, in Tuscaloosa, I'd like y'all to prove Richard and myself to go attend that conference. It's required to keep your certification current, where you can legally spray the chemicals on the roadside, so, you know, I know you probably don't like taking excuses, but if you got any questions regarding that. And, look, if some of y'all want to do some chemical spraying, let me know, I'll get with Richard. We, we do what we call pre-urgent spraying, which is typically done in January, before the, the plants come out, and then we do a post-urgent, you know, sometime in May or something. Um, you know, if y'all want us to do that, just let me know, we'll make plans to do that, because like I said, we'll, if you want your pre-urgent, we'll go ahead and start it in January. So, you know, but we, we got, you gotta be certified to do that, you gotta be licensed, so we, we need to go to that school to get our, our license current.
How could y'all do that?
The license, it's once, once a year, it's, there's a conference at the end of February that we go to, and that, that gives us the points we need to enroll us. Any questions? Just get with us if you, if you, if you want to do that, because there's time limitations on when that's done. Surplus property. We've got a couple items that, that we haven't used, that have been sitting in the bullpen, and, and just really of, of no value to the county. We got two asphalt anchored distributors, um, that we store asphalt in, um, that are leaking, they're old, they're really not roadworthy. And then we got an motivator, which is, I don't know, Alice Chandler's, it's got a, it's got a worm gear in it, it was, we, we had one machine, it, it broke, you couldn't get the part. So we had one machine and it broke, so we're kind of thinking, you know, this, this is not really gonna work. That worm, that worm beer.
That'll be a gear in the middle.
Right up the front. Yeah. You know, um, it's, it's just, it just, we hadn't worked for it, we, we thought about putting it on Doug's building and selling it, and, um, let's see, what, I had anything else, it just, it's seven-on-six garbage truck, the motor's out in it, uh, we got an estimate of about twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to, to fix it, and it's worth about fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars, it's, no six model, two thousand six model garbage truck, just sitting there, and it just, it's just gonna deteriorate. So.
Spend thirty thousand dollars and don't still have twenty thousand.
Yeah, our driver's no six, we've had a lot of problems since we bought it, and, you know, the motors are all handmade.
Wonderful machines, and they're great, wonderful.
Low mileage. I'm kind of feeling like Kenneth, if everything we got's poor or broke, you know, we're trying to get rid of it.
I was in eighty.
And we need more money too. I was just gonna ask y'all to give us their department some more, but I don't think that's gonna work.
Hey, hers is an eighty's models.
Yeah, I know, I know, we, listen, we, we know we got a problem, we just got to figure out how to fix it, you know, we, we realize that.
Well, like Bob answered the question, we get more people to buy gas here, if we get these prices down.
Okay. Okay, we, of course, we lost two full-time employees the other day, and like, I'd like to replace them, we did an interdepartmental, uh, promotion notice, and, um, I think we're probably only gonna have one afternoon in departmental. I, I'd like permission to go outside the department, outside the county, to do the, the advertisement for the other full-time position. And possibly both of them, we'll be having interviews, but, you know, you know, if you've got any questions regarding that, these are Tanner Chandler left, and then Dylan Estes left us. And, um, so, you know, we've got those vacancies. Okay, um, I think that's really all that I've got, there's, well, one other thing, um, you know, I don't want to steal these guys' thunder, but, you know, y'all probably heard, we made a trip to Tuscaloosa, we were fortunate enough to secure a quarter million dollar grant to, um, improve Ohio, Ohio Highway seventy-eight west, about their cutoff between nineteen and State Route seventy-four. It was originally an old state road.
A district, yeah.
It's in two.
It splits one and two.
One and two.
Splitter.
One and two, it's, it's the meeting that you and I attended.
Me and Mike were there and talked to them.
Mr. Brown, um, had contacted me, and I talked to Keith and Kenneth, and we went down there, met with the director, Dr. John Cooper, we met with Mr. Spike Brown, and, and met with some other employees of the Department of Transportation, and, you know, they were, we were gonna make some safety improvements to the roads as well, and, um, they agreed to fund it. We're just, you know, great that, that we were able to take advantage of that money and, and, and get that road fixed, because it is rough, it's in bad shape.
The state, the state that had that road on their contract for years. The state, the state had had that road under contract for years and years, of what the deal was, and what their plan was, they wanted to give it back to the county. But they wanted us to take it back as it was, so we asked if, if that, uh, we had a few restrictions, we told them we'd take it back if they'd fix it. So, uh, might come up with figures what it'd cost to fix it, and so, uh, we negotiated with them, and, and they gave us enough money to fix it.
And then they gonna cost one and two anything?
Right, so it'll cost nothing.
What we call S T money is a hundred percent, a hundred percent state money.
You know, they hadn't done that, I, I don't know if we'd have wanted it back, cause I know, we would let the state.
Well, it, it's been some confusion, we've been maintaining it, and Kenneth can probably attest to this, we've been maintaining that road twenty years, I guess, hasn't it?
I always, I honestly thought it was back to county.
Yeah, I think everybody really did, I mean, it's, you know, it, it, we, we had maintained it and, and taken care of it for twenty years, I guess. I guess we assumed the duty, but, uh. I, that's all I've got, unless y'all got another question.
What day did y'all go down there?
I don't know, it was Friday.
It was Thursday, Thursday after New Year's.
Well, we met with them, what, two months ago, or longer?
Yeah, some time, yeah.
Uh. About six weeks, and they went back and found out.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mike, okay.
Yeah, I think it was the third.
Okay, the. Scott, Ruth, you want Scott to go first?
Yeah, um, Howard's not here yet, so I think it'd be good for Hunt to go first, while Kevin's here.
Okay.
First of all, let's continue the discussion about the gas tax and, and doing some little bit of research about it, that I think, uh, we need to follow up on. Uh, there's, there's been some disagreement about the amounts, and a lot of discussion about it. When this came up a couple of years ago, uh, the funding the state receives is split, um, with the counties and the cities. Where the counties receive eighty percent of the money, cities receive twenty percent of the money, and that's what we're supposed, a couple of years ago. Now, the legal municipalities on behalf of the cities are asking for an even split of that money. Um, and I was talking with Mike about that, that is somewhat concerning to me if, if, if there's a disagreement between the county organization and the city's organization. That it might put a stall on this, on this plan, uh, like you said, we, we need some increase in, in monies. Uh, so I think it would be good for us to speak with our legislators, and speak, you know, with Sonny, and make sure that our agenda is pushed through with this. Additionally, there's some concern from, uh, comments some senators have made, that, um, they might want some skin in the game from the counties. Um, twenty seven out of the sixty seven counties have a local, uh, fuel tax, uh, obviously, we are not one of them. Um, and I know at least one of the senators had made comments about that, I did a little research on it. In our area, you know, every municipality in the county collects a fuel tax, um, from one cent to two cent. I think Hamilton is two cent, and Brilliant, Hackenberg, Bear Creek, and Winfield are one cent, uh, Gwin is two cents, and Habley is one and a quarter. Uh, so every municipality collects a fuel tax. Uh, the counties in our area, Limestone and Madison collect three cent, Colbert collects two, Coleman collects one, Lawton, uh, four. Tuscaloosa one, and Walker one, point two five, and it seems like the counties that collect the fuel tax are in that one to two range for the most part. Walden County, which is a completely separate issue there, but they collect five cent fuel tax. Um, but, just be mindful that that question may come up if they start pushing this, that. There will at least be some legislators that want counties to, to do something as well. And of course, that would require a local bill, y'all cannot sit here as commissioners and impose a tax. And, and that's an issue we've discussed on many, many issues, um, where municipalities can, can vote to raise taxes to an extent. Y'all are very limited in what y'all can do in that regard, but just know that those are some of the issues that are coming about, is the state's gonna get their money? Now, the question is gonna be, what's, what's to be divided with the rest of it, and how much do they want local participation to be? Um, but it's gonna be a battle for the next couple of months.
What'd you say, Marion County guy, how much, uh, tax do we have, we have like?
We don't.
That's what I, I didn't like I heard you say.
No, we, we don't have one, and our surrounding counties, other than Walker, do not, Fayette, Lamar, Franklin.
How would this gasoline, gasoline tax have to be imposed, imposed on?
Sir.
How would this gasoline tax be imposed, uh, used if you imposed one, anyway, that the county saw it, or roads, or whatever?
Would generally be for roads, um, um, typically, that's how it would be, and y'all, you know, if y'all had a say in the legislation, which I'll, obviously, I would hope that you would. It would be how you see fit, uh, I guess it could go to the general fund, but I think it would be much more palatable to people if they saw that it went directly to.
What about jails?
Um, it's a different issue, uh, it's a different issue, um, on, with the jail is, we've gotta answer that question. Um, and what, in speaking with, uh, various people in that, I believe what we need to do is. Obviously, we need to figure out a financing plan, but we need, uh, to get a plan together about what size jail do we need? And where is it gonna be, and figure out financing options, and how much revenue that those options could be. And the first part of that is, obviously, with, with the sheriff, is the, what are our needs? Um, you know, is it a hundred-bed jail, is it a three hundred-bed jail? And I know those numbers are not correct, but get those numbers as to what we can adequately res, uh, expect and plan for the future. Cause what, our jail was designed in late seventies for.
Late seventies, it was around sixty-five or so, and with, for remodelations, over the past years, it's eighty-six now, it's total.
And so, we need to have a plan of, or what we need now, but also, so that we're not coming back every ten years needing a new jail, how that can be modified, uh, in the future. And I think it would be very wise if we got that plan together, and we're very specific on it, before we go to legislators and, you know, or on the state and federal level. To ask for money, so that we can go and say, here's what we need, and here's how that's gonna cost, and here's how we can fund some of it, and here's where we need the help. Um, and my experience with, especially at the federal level and federal programs, we have to have that information up before they even wanna talk to us about it. Um, and I think we're starting down that, that step, at least with architects, and getting an idea about what we can do. Um, another issue that, um, uh, Chairman Burleson and I talked about, we've been approached, um, about. Changing a couple of our voting places, and, uh, just out of, um, either deterioration of that voting place, moving to a different location. And speaking with Chairman Burleson, I think if we, we do something, we need to look, go ahead and look at everything, uh, throughout the county. And see if there's things that we, we need to change, instead of like moving one voting place to another spot now, and coming back six months later and doing, doing something different. And so, I'm preparing a study for y'all, I've been around to all of our voting places, looked at the map, and. This map I brought with this is a map of our precincts and our voting locations, of what we might wanna consider closing certain locations. And pairing them with other locations, or moving some locations. I know we've had some incidents at a couple of our voting houses, and, um, that's the last thing we want, we want people to be able to go vote, uh, you know, and vote in a safe place. Where they don't have to, you know, risk any dangers, and make sure that our voting houses are compliant with ADA and, uh, just general access for the public. Um, but that's something that I want y'all to be, be thinking about and looking, and I'll, hopefully, Monday, I'll, I'll get y'all, you know, some pictures and some considerations about what we might need to do.
I agree. I'd like to move about four or five.
We have some that I feel fairly confident we can combine, there are some that are confusing to the general electric, electorate, um. One voting house, there might be a hundred people vote in, there's three commissioners that they vote for. Another one, another small one where there's usually fifty to a hundred, there's two commissioners they vote for, and I'm just using commissioners because it's, uh.
How many, uh, poll workers would be cut if, if, uh, you go to a, kind of, a, a more, less poll places? Would these, uh, poll workers still be able, needed, because it's, I mean, the number would not decrease only the, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't do, you wouldn't need any less poll workers, would you?
Don't have those numbers down exactly, but.
I guess you, you get a lot of people today, they really like, uh, I guess, money.
I don't, I don't think in the beginning you would necessarily need to cut poll workers, uh, I, because I think we still want people to be able to vote as easily as possible. Um, but, uh, it may be something in the future, obviously, as technology increases, that, that's gonna be as necessary.
Yeah, they, they have to go.
And they help tremendously, um, uh, when everything works, but if, if you're in areas where the service isn't particularly great, then that might be an issue too, but. Uh, but that's just something for y'all to be thinking about, and, uh, uh, if y'all have any thoughts and suggestions on it, and, and seeing some of them. I know there are a couple that we're gonna have to do something about, and it's, it's no question.
They're back rooms, that it's not handicapped accessible, they're just.
Yeah, it's, um, and some that are handicapped accessible are very dangerously handicapped accessible, so, um, we need to, to be looking at those. And I'll, I'll, again, I've got some pictures for y'all to look at, and some stuff, and I'll put those together for you on Monday.
Well, I'm sure you're getting the proximity, uh, mileage on, uh, you know, one mine, two of mine, not over five mile park.
That's, all right, there, there are several that, quite frankly, for the people that are voting in one particular precinct, they can move to another, and it'd be the same distance, or sometimes, there are many times the less. You know, that, um, that's, we, we don't wanna limit access for people, we don't wanna make it more difficult, or, for people, but, um. But there are some areas where we have several, uh, precincts where we could probably combine a couple of those.
I've got polls voting in Burn Far Department, can throw a rock and hit it, and they voted another place.
Yep.
That don't even make sense.
That's one of the areas that we're talking about, but, yeah, um, and then, those are three things. The other thing that I was wanting to talk to y'all about is, just to get some clarification on, is, we have this local act. I don't know, you, you are all somewhat familiar with it, cause y'all been around the county, and I'll just pass those around. I just printed that up for you, so I wanted to go to just a little bit in detail about. We're not supposed to work on private property, we have a, a local act that allows us to do certain things, and, um, and that's. I say I don't work on private property outside of emergencies or type situations, and there's some limited circumstances, but. This act gives, gives the county commissioners, uh, county commission, two, uh, distinct abilities. The first one is, as in section one, is to construct and maintain driveways for schools, churches, and cemeteries, um, located in, in the county, and y'all can do it at your own expense. And I don't think that's ever been much of an issue or question. Number two on this is to be able to construct and maintain any gravel road or driveway from a public road to a residence for up to a quarter of a mile. That's obviously exclusive of bridges, I don't want you to construct a bridge up on somebody's property, but, um, that gives y'all the ability to go out there and, and do that. But it's gotta be at the homeowner's expense, and, um, then the second aspect of that, that one is that. In your discretion, you can provide normal maintenance on people's driveway, and that can be at your expense. Um, then whatever normal maintenance, uh, at your expense is, that's basically what y'all determine that to be, Mike and I have talked about that. Um, and using the materials and selling the materials to do those kind of things and construct those kind of things, we can do that under these limited circumstances. Um, but it has to be in compliance with this particular act.
So, in other words, Scott, to kinda clear things up, if they wanna buy a load of slag, or if the property owner wants to pay for a load of slag, they can, they can place that on his driveway up to his house, as long as he pays for the slag.
That's right.
Now, now, let's say that, for, let's say that, that slag needs blading or dressing up, they would still be responsible for paying for that motor grader to, to make that.
If it's part of the normal maintenance, the county can do that, if it's part of the normal maintenance, the county can do that.
At our expense.
At your expense, and like I, I, I told Mike, when we was talking about slag, I had no idea, I mean, you know. I know the terms is tar, slag, and rock, and gravel, but y'all are the ones that know what those items are, and how necessary they are for the, for the driveway. And if slag is something, then that can be used for that limited purpose, and the homeowner can, can purchase it for that limited purposes, to construct the driveways, not make the driveways.
Well, on that question that Mike was asking you, Scott, just doesn't know, on maintaining the driveway, uh, with, uh, what I, what I know about it and doing, and I don't know if these guys agree. But most times you go to driveway, and they do put the slag on, what it does, it cuts your maintenance down on that driveway.
Yeah, it eliminates the grader.
Most time, you're, you're done with it.
We're normally going to the grader, I'd say, once every four to six months, engrave this drive. If these people was good enough to pay for the slag, and you put it on there, you'd normally cut that down once a year maybe, then you can go pull that slag back in for them and be gone, and, uh. But it does cut down on your maintenance for seeing for the dirt part, and so, when the county, really, the county saves by them doing that.
And I, I know there's a lot of discussion about this act, and whether it's good for the county or not. I think the idea is generally that there's a public purpose that is served by this, it helps with the maintenance of your roads as well, when you have good driveways coming onto it. It's basically like when the state redoes a highway, and they, they'll pay.
Or rent out to keep them fair enough.
It's something that's, also, the taxpayer gets for his, I mean, he gets a little sum for his tax money.
Right, right, but you can do that, and y'all's discretion, what y'all, uh, feel free, but that's what y'all can do. Do y'all have any, any questions?
I know, uh, I'm not for raising taxes, I'm not, nobody likes taxes, but at the same time, Marion County is blessed, because we can do stuff for people. That these other counties run us, we are not allowed to do, and I don't know, people get, uh, just used to it, and they take it for granted. But you can't go to Lamar County, or Winston County, or Fayette County, or no other county, and just maintain somebody's driveway, they're not allowed to do it.
Right.
And I don't know, I guess people just take it for granted, Marion County, that everybody gets done that way, but they, they don't.
No, it's, it's, it's definitely, uh, something that very few counties have an act very similar to this, and, uh, um, I think it's been done wisely, uh, over the years. But just know what you can and cannot do with regard to that, um, but, yeah, it is a huge benefit to our, our property owners.
Were you gonna go with something about the, the sunshine law, so we'd be, uh, aware of what, uh, meetings we can do and whatever?
Yeah, we just need these guys not to show up. Uh, yeah, sunshine law, um, it's changed, uh, somewhat, last several years, but we have to be very careful if, if any of our meeting has a majority. Um, the public is, uh, basically able to come and, and listen, newspaper can come, uh, Wayne can come, or any others can come. We're also limited on what we can do as far as, you know, sending out mass emails and responding back to each other, or texts in some regard, or. Um, meeting in small groups, followed up by another small group, if it's something that's gonna be voted on. And, um, um, we have to be very mindful of the discussions that we have, and the public's ability to, to be in on those meetings like today. It's just a work session, but Scott and Wayne have every right to be here.
That's one thing they told us at Montgomery, like, I can't call Dale, and me and him talk about something, and then Dale call Bob and talk about the same thing, I'm, you know, that's.
Well, one common area that I've seen that is easy to do, right, is, say, chairman. One common area that I've seen that is easy to do, right, is say chairman or mayor, uh, send out a email to all the council members or send out a message to everyone, and, which is perfectly fine. But then people will start responding to that, that puts it into a different, a different realm. And, um, just know that those kinda communications are open to the public, and, um, we just have to be mindful of that and be careful about what we say.
Under what circumstances are we able to meet without public care? Is there not some, what about representatives or, or group?
We can, uh, under, uh, those kinda limited circumstances, meet with a legislative body, or if it's some kind of a, um...
Or like meetings in, or, or go to, or...
Like in Montgomery or, or Washington where we're meeting, uh, with our representatives, um, those are just general meetings that there can be...
Those meetings can be made.
Y'all can have dinner with each other, you know.
You can basically talk to each other on the phone, communicate, have meetings, as long as nothing's gonna be voted on or coming up to be voted on and you're gonna vote.
That's right.
That's what it boils down to, right? But, now this is the way I took what they told us in Montgomery. Like I said, hold up, I can't call Dale and me and Dale discuss something that needs to be done, and then him turn around and call Bob, or me call Bob and discuss it, and us three make a decision over the phone. We can't do that.
Now, they, they look at that as basically something, he's like, you're going around public meetings.
That's, I mean, that's what I, way I understood it in Montgomery.
You can, but you can't discuss how you're gonna vote. You can talk to them about anything, but you can't tell them that we need to vote this or we need to vote that.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, like, us three can't talk amongst each other, so we're gonna move this door right here, you know, and then have it done without it going before we're meeting and before, before voting.
Right.
Correct?
Right. What, what, yeah, that, what happens so often is you come to a meeting, uh, an extremely complicated issue comes up, and it's voted on, no discussion, everybody's good, and it's like, how'd that happen?
Yeah.
You know, everybody talked about it, you know, behind and made the decision, so that's what we're trying to avoid. But, but there are some things where we can meet and, and, and talk about.
Any other things you wanna go over? I mean, things come up from day to day that we, we don't, I mean, we can ask them day to day for everything, we don't know what's gonna happen, but, uh, Scott, we play with our meetings and if it's important, we meet away with those things. But Brooke?
I got some things, but before I start talking about the stuff that's on the agenda, when Shaw was talking and when Hunt was talking, this is the monthly financial statement that we give y'all. It says of December thirty first. And I wanted y'all to see this sheet in particular, so that y'all knew where some stuff was coming from. Now that says of December thirty first, this one that I'm about to hand you will be shown on the January thirty first financial statement. But on the tenth of each month, we have an online deposit made from the state of Alabama. And in that deposit, it hits four different accounts. So you're gonna see a one-one-seven, a one-one-one, a one-one-three, and a one-one-eight. And I've put out beside each deposit what fund it is. So your first two, your triple R, then your gasoline, highway traffic, secondary road, secondary road, and triple R. This is the only revenue that we receive each month for those accounts. So when you look at your financial statements that we give you, and you look at the revenue on the bottom, that's seventy-six fifty-three, and then you come on to this one and you add up the three that say triple R, you'll see that it's gonna be between seventy and eighty thousand each month, okay? And what y'all do is on your gasoline, the one-eleven, what's got the arrow pointing down to the five districts below, we divide that by five, and usually there's a penny to that we're short because it's not always an even number. So we rotate that penny, so you can see in January, Kenneth was short a penny. But next month, Dale's gonna be short a penny. So we rotate it so that it's even.
Yeah.
Um, your highway and traffic, it's got a little mark beside it with an arrow. That money is the money that y'all split up last month, I believe. Y'all wait till there's a significant amount of money in that coffer, and then y'all divide it by five, because really five thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars in the month of January isn't enough for y'all to see a difference on. So y'all usually wait till it's around thirty thousand, and then y'all divide it up so that it's like thirty thousand apiece. And I think last month, yeah, last month, y'all split it up, it was thirty-four thousand eight hundred apiece. So y'all let that accrue and then y'all divide it. But when Shaw was going over that, I wanted y'all to see, we don't have the tax, Marion County Commission doesn't want to impose a tax on gasoline. But there's a real complex, complicated distribution for the gasoline tax across the state of Alabama that Shaw has in his office.
It's ridiculous.
It's very horrible, but I wanted y'all to see, each month, y'all get between seventy-five and eighty-five thousand to be split amongst yourselves, and that's all the money y'all have to operate off of.
Let me ask a question here, Brooke.
Yes.
Say if we got our representative legislators or senators to impose a county tax, it'd have to be voted on by the people.
Why?
Well, say if you got a two cent, in other words, this four cent, uh, gas tax up here, would it be half as much as what that four cent tax?
I would have to defer that to Scott.
No, I don't think so. It would be, um, I don't know that, looking at that four cent, uh, that we get from state would be accurate as to what we might generate in our county.
So it wouldn't be by the same formula?
Right, it might be a different, different aspect. I think maybe a better way to look at it is see what each city collects on their tax, and we might would get a better idea about what we would get in our county. For instance, see what Hamilton collects on two cents, which I know what that number is. What Winfield collects on their one cent. That would probably, combining those numbers would give us a pretty fair indication of what we would get in the county, because I'm not for sure how many, uh, gas stations there are outside of municipality in the county. So I think if we look at, see what each of those municipalities collect, that'd probably give us a pretty good indication as to what we would be expected to collect.
At one point in time, they, they did not get any of our county tax, but they, they get some, uh, cities got, uh, some of the county tax at one time for them, but...
Yes. And that's, that was one of the things I was mentioning, like Brooke said, there's a, the way they divide up that money now is through some different formulas. And we wanna make sure that on this new tax, if there is a new tax imposed at the state level, that counties receive their fair share of it in a simplified manner. The worst possible thing that could happen for the counties is a, say, a twelve, a twelve cent tax goes through, and I don't know that that's the number, but let's say it's a twelve cent tax, and then the counties receive an insignificant portion of that to really not affect anything, because it's been since ninety-two, since the last change, it may be another twenty, twenty-five years before there's another change. So we wanna make sure that whatever's imposed now, that counties receive such a portion of it, that y'all gonna be able to do some good on it. Um, the prices have increased so dramatically since ninety-two on everything that y'all do. Um, y'all need to get your fair share of what's gonna be...
In other words, we don't need the twelve cent tax passing, and then eleven cents of it goes to the state, and a penny is divided amongst everybody else.
Exactly.
I mean, that's...
The state, the only way that they, and the only hand we can have in this, and this is what they told us at Montgomery, you know, if they do, they do, and it's like Scott said, we don't know if they're asking for a ten or a twelve or whatever, but that we, that will go between the counties, our legislature and our workers, our representatives, senators, they're the only one that can, can do any good in this to make sure that our county gets our right share, is that right?
That's right, and, and we've gotta, um...
We don't have a vote in it. Only, only thing we can do is tell our representatives, if it does pass, we've gotta have a certain percentage for our county to, to make it worth the time for us to get on.
That's right, we have nine hundred and seventy-four, I think, miles in the county, uh, over seven hundred are paved. We've got the responsibility for the majority of the bridges in the county, and a lot of those have been, you know, fifty-plus years that need to be replaced. You can't go replace bridges for ten thousand dollars.
And on my rights, Scott, on, on this, the way they was talking in Montgomery, uh, this will directly go for roads. It will be this tax, it won't be for nothing else, it will be...
Road and bridges.
Road and bridges, that's what this taxes, well, right now.
You're in the process of, you may want to bring us so we can meet with our, uh, two newly elected and, and... So you're, I say you're in the process of getting some meet times, we can meet with them.
That's right, yes, sir.
I was gonna do that first. Uh, so what I have on the work session agenda for the January fourteenth meeting is Greg with the CAC has reached out, and currently Kenny Jackson and Eddie Burke are the county commission representatives, and he needs y'all to appoint two representatives from your commission to replace them since they are no longer elected. So on Monday, y'all just need to come up with two that y'all would like to go to those CAC meetings. The next thing I've got is DHR has sent a letter. Um, our current board appointee person has passed away, and they would like for the county commission to appoint Melinda Briggs in her position. The next thing I've got is Kenneth had spoken with a gentleman about the tending at the courthouse and the commission office, and he brought by a quote yesterday. It was five hundred for one, six hundred for the other, so eleven hundred total.
It'd be for the front glass.
You take ten and, ten is okay.
When the ten is...
Okay, okay.
So I wanted to make sure that y'all are all aware of that, if that was something that y'all wanted to vote on on Monday or not.
Well, this, did we, is this all that, what we got? Did we not get here, did we try to do it?
The doors up front, that part's not done. Um, I had to go back and do a mess on that, but it was like over a thousand dollars just for the doors here with that same type of material that's on the windows.
This guy's done a foul, a very foul, he's, he done all the front, yeah.
I wasn't here when he came by on the courthouse, was it just the side where the security guards were?
Yes, not the other side, just the one side.
Now, this is over the courthouse, that's probably them guys over there, and this is security concern for them, you know, while they're, you got an all right person, and they're setting dogs right there, you know, if they can see in there.
Yeah, that's why they can't see through, they can't see out. Plus the evening and so on.
The evening.
Yeah. Well, um, this is for, this is for the courthouse.
It was six hundred and five hundred, the courthouse one, and then the doors here at the commission office, which is another security and...
Completely dead.
And we still need to get the trim fixed between the two doors because bugs and everything are coming through the front doors.
In the front, that would be for the doors and the two big windows.
The other thing I've got, Paige wasn't able to be here during the work session, but she's coming to the meeting on Mon, or, yeah, Monday. She's the probate judge-elect, and there's a couple of things that she needs to discuss with y'all and get in order before she heads over on the fifteenth. What she's written is, "I just wanted to touch base with you regarding Monday's agenda. I need to request that the commissioners hire the three ladies that are currently employed by the probate office. It is my understanding that top out pay was agreed upon between the current probate judge and the fire commission. Top out pay was thirteen for clerks and fifteen fifty for chief clerks. That was what was in line with the revenue commission." Right now, she is reviewing the information that was given to the county commission by the previous chief clerk when the previous county commission and the current probate judge were in negotiations of the pay rates. So she has that spreadsheet, what Ms. Green gave us those payments. She wants to look at that, then she wants to request a probationary period of twelve months with a performance review and possibly a step raise after six months. While these are technically new hires, these ladies have been employed by the office for various periods of times, but with different duties. Um, at this time, she is not requesting that any of those three be granted the chief clerk position. She would like to wait till the probationary period is over before she determines who the chief clerk would be. Also going along with that, the revenue commission and the probate judge are gonna need an increase in petty cash. Right now, you do not provide the probate judge's office with petty cash. We've got to do that so that when people go in to pay, they have cash to be able to give them back. The revenue commissioner is asking for an increase in petty cash, because right now she has a thousand in petty cash, but taking over the tag office, she would like an increase. Both are requesting between fifteen hundred and two thousand, so Barbara's would increase to by five hundred dollars or by a thousand dollars, whatever y'all chose to decide.
Well, how long would that be before it'd be refunded, I mean, after we get operating it, man?
The petty cash doesn't get refunded because the monies that are collected by the public in those two offices go into checking accounts and they get distributed out between the state, local municipalities, the county commission. But that petty cash would always be over there.
Oh, yes.
So at any point, we can go over there and count down their drawers, or when the auditors come in, the auditors count down and ensure that money's there. If the money's not there, the public official has to put that money back.
So this is just actually there to help like change and whatever.
Operating it to start off.
Once it reaches a certain level, they deposit that, I'm assuming, right?
The petty cash?
Yeah.
No, the petty cash stays in there, um, some people call it teals, some people call it cash drawers. Um, I'm gonna use it like a fast food restaurant. So they, you're the first person in line buying breakfast at Jack's, and you give them a twenty, and your biscuit only costs two dollars, they can give you back eighteen.
In other words, it's like, anytime, anytime they walk in, oh, boy, there's gotta be that much petty cash on there.
There's probably all over the place.
Yeah.
So, but she will be here Monday with the pay amount. Um, the next thing I've got is the drink machine at the courthouse. Y'all have got, Kenneth was over there the other day, and they were having some issues with getting their drinks out of the drink machines. There's a Pepsi machine and there's a Coke machine in the courthouse and the concession room. Sometimes they have issues with the drinks coming out.
Well, it looks like maybe they need to replace the machine, it's not, it's malfunctioning.
Are they, the machines belong to the drink companies, correct?
I believe so. So y'all have got to decide if y'all want to ask them to replace their machines, or if y'all want to see if Ben Mark, who does the concessions, will also do drinks and provide a drink machine.
Because they got the machines for the chips and stuff like this, and they could supply the drink machines. Because the problem we're at now is people's losing their money left and right in these machines, and they can't get them...
In one of them, nothing built up.
Well, they, I don't know, they're complaining about both of them.
They just need to make, they'll take them, if they can fix them, maybe get some more.
I mean, we just need to get Coke and Pepsi and bring you boxes.
Yeah, I mean...
Because they're all taxpayers, I mean, everybody works for them, and, I mean, you know.
We decide that money.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, they just have a problem.
Yeah, well...
And the other thing I've got is, um, Volker was planning for the January fourteenth meeting at nine, and after discussing with Hunt, I'm looking at moving that to where y'all have a recess, um, right after your last item on your agenda for Monday. Go eat lunch and then come back after your recess to be able to meet with Volker. Then Kevin's got three companies that he's gonna try to line up as well for Monday. If he can't get some of those on Monday, he's going to try to get those for after lunch on January the twenty-second.
Okay.
All right.
Well, can you, well, you know ahead of time, but if you could put Volker off on the twenty-second?
Well, hopefully he's gonna call me back here in... Well, hopefully he's gonna call me back here in just a little while, so I should know something by the time I leave today so that in the morning I can call Volker and tell them not to come on Monday. Or to come on Monday and plan on other companies coming as well for discussion about the jail and a new jail. Um, because it was Fogg's request that the whole county commission and Eren's request, the whole county commission, get a chance to meet with these people and talk to them. Kinda see what they have that they might be able to offer Marion County.
So the ones when we meet as a jail committee, we can have y'all's input and feedback they take on the, up here, you know?
But you don't need to adjourn because you would be able to ask them questions, is that right, Hunt? Okay, then the next thing I've got is on January the twenty-second, the only thing that I know for sure for that meeting date is Napal wants to attend that meeting at nine AM and they want to pretty much introduce their staff and tell you what they have available for your county.
Did, I never did follow up here, they only, I'm, you know, I called you the other day, Keith, Keith Young's wife died, what, two weeks ago? Is, uh, what would be appropriate for, uh, you know, we can't, we don't have petty cash to, uh, our commission, I mean, our county money, but do, do we need to do something, uh, maybe, you know, just so little people can sure help us or, you know, look favorable on us and all that things?
Keith has helped us a lot over the years.
Keith's a good fellow, I mean, Keith spent in my house years ago, I mean, I thank the world of him.
What would be appropriate for something was to let them know that we, um, some, you know, use it, a time you give bibles to the church, I'm sure they have church going, but what would be, I mean, not like...
Did I have any blue flowers?
I didn't see anything in blue flowers that he had, but, um, I know he's in Baltimore, he'll have a bit, um, that, that might be more... Just thinking about what might be appropriate to him.
Yeah, I mean, at...
We can wait till he, we got, if he comes the twenty-second, we can wait.
And I think just, just passing along the condolences, you know?
A nice card and I'll have signed it or whatever and...
Mike, I cannot win over with them.
Well, I thought they know Gideon Bible. And I mean, we talk, ten dollar fees, fifty dollars worth of Gideon Bible is, you know, pretty nice, yes. The way we were back that season, well, like...
I, I've got something that's been brought to my attention on courthouse, that I just, you know, something to pass along. Uh, I've had several people ask me, was there any way that we could fix a place that's not in the door of the courthouse for people to smoke and get them off the steps? Like when, when we're having court and all, you know, anybody comes in out of the courthouse, they're having to walk through, everybody's standing there smoking, you know? You know, could, you know, maybe could we build a little shed out to the side or something, you know, and make it for smoking and, and, uh... I've, I've had a lot of ladies, you know, say that they, you know...
Well, there's a lot of time, they put up, no smoking within so many feet.
Yeah.
And when this address didn't, was it Kenny one of them weren't talked to or?
Roger, not was the chairman.
Oh, yeah, Roger.
What he did was he had a smoker's outpost put at the corner of the vinyl fence, but then the problem that you have, when people smoke, is it comes into the building because of where the security is, there's a suction that pulls it in. But then you also have the people who do smoke, if they go to the outpost, then they're getting rained on.
Yeah, that, that's...
So, I mean, it's kind of the...
If I get a cannonball and beg you to go out there outside, I get rained on.
But we have several people that utilize the benches around the courthouse on court days, but the problem is they're not covered, so even when they go to eat lunch out there, if it rains, they're not able to regardless if they're smokers or not smokers.
That comes down to how far we willing to accommodate smokers.
Well, what are we talking?
The people that are complaining.
Are we talking employees going outside to smoke or pedestrians come to the, to the, to the courthouse?
There's some employees, I think, that'll go out and smoke.
Or people that's there on court business.
It's typically people.
Court dates.
Court dates.
I don't even know, we just said what we want.
The complaints I've got, I've got.
Yeah, it's usually the people involved in court and they're smart.
Yeah.
If you go, I thought it was having a fire drill up at, uh, Wrangler, they drag walk two hundred feet down to the highway.
Yeah.
I've seen them out, I've seen them out from the building before, I wondered, is that...
Yeah, they gotta walk all the way to the highway.
But Helen Keller, you can't even smoke on their property, you gotta walk across the street.
We're not allowed to smoke on county property either, are we?
Yeah, but, I mean...
So what, I mean, our property goes to the sidewalk.
It does, a- again, I think it just goes to how far you want to accommodate the smokers, but, I mean, I think you'd be within your rights to move it outside of the building area, you know, that little...
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Stuff like that, cause that's the biggest concern is you're walking in and you're walking through a haze of smoke, especially if you're there on the wrong end.
You know, we need to, we need to get them out of the door, whether we wanna accommodate them with a place to smoke or not, it's...
Or no smoking either, no smoking on, uh, county property and draw a line here at where it's ours.
Smoke on the sidewalks.
Uh, we can...
You do that.
Then...
Talk about that too.
Then we've got, where, where, uh, where does the city and the county property go start and stop there?
You got those cheers, what about those?
Sidewalks, the cities, and then as soon as you get to the grasses, it's counted, that was my understanding.
I've never heard it called up before, you got them cheers.
What?
I've never heard it called up before.
That's a...
The cheers? Do we need to have that being poured in the cheers?
You got them cheers.
Now, the black guy's side came out of them, poured the cheers in them all.
I mean, he's like going to a restaurant, you can't smoke in there, you get, people sit in around you, spit in cups.
Yeah, a lot of restaurants, you know, it's, restaurants are all smoke-free, but they're not tobacco-free, you know?
Okay, Brooke, is there anything else you have, uh, we...
I just mentioned my job that when the time cars, I think the majority of time goes in and that tomorrow at two, there's a swearing ceremony on the second floor of the courthouse and following that swearing ceremony, there is an reception to where you will all be honored for the...
Y'all knew about that, yeah? Okay, is there any, y'all have any other questions, Brooke? Over that court we got to the town.
Go to bother, just wire a decent shirt and fire fence, don't have to dress up, you're dressed, tell them...
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.